All right, I want to welcome everybody to the September seventeenth meeting at Fisher Time six o'clock. If I can get an approval of the agenda with the addition of litigation executive discussion.
Second.
Second, on favor, I.
Aye.
It's a pleasure tonight have Ms. Fong to open us up and pledge an immeasculation.
They know how hard this is for me. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for this day. I ask that you guide our path today and every day. Please bring with us, please be with us throughout the days and help us to navigate with whatever comes in our path. Most importantly, help us to reflect and to live out our lives in the ways that is honoring to you. Lord, I ask to not only focus on my needs, but I ask that you bless those around me. Please help my friends and family to see, feel, and experience your love. Please protect our country, our county, and our homes. Please place your healing touch on those that are sick. I thank you for the wonderful people I have in my life, and I ask you to guide their paths and to bring them closer to you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, Commissioner. We'll have to let you do that more often.
John's next.
That's fine, I'll do it. All right, if we can move forward to consent agenda and approval for the minutes, we had a work session on September third along with the first Tuesday. If y'all have had opportunity to repeat the minutes or entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? On favor, I.
Aye.
As have it. We have Ms. Carswell, Denise, for Honeysuckle Drive. Are you here tonight? Okay. All right, we'll move on. T-Splosh Education Session. Mr. Ritter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the T-Splosh will be on the ballot in November, and just wanted to take a few minutes tonight to have a conversation with the board about any sort of education sessions or materials that y'all wanted to develop or hold. Shaun is here, and Public Works has created a series of informational videos about different things with their department. They have created one for T-Splosh, and we wanted to show that to the board and see if that was something that y'all were interested in. We do have to be careful that we don't advocate for its passage, but we can certainly tell people what the T-Splosh would do, and so that would be the aim of any materials we create or distribute. So Shaun, you want to come up and you can set this up if you want to, and I'll get it ready to go.
Yeah, when we, sorry about that. When we first started discussing T-Splosh, our social media and slash admin assistant, we had a meeting, got together and talked about how we were going to educate the public and bring public awareness and let them know exactly what T-Splosh does, what it would do for our county, what it would do for our citizens, and how it's funded. And so she created this short little video. It's just a little snippet, sneak peek. We can certainly get more detail. We can do a series of videos and maybe just like articles, small articles on it. So just wanted y'all to take a look at it and see what you thought. If you want us to move on further with it, we'll certainly do so.
Sounds great. Here we go. Let's see. Give me time to sign it. Keep going. You got it.
All right, let's try again. So now that one's sideways.
That's okay.
And transportation special purpose local option bill tax. Basically, it's a sales tax that can only go to local transportation businesses. Some items are sent from this special tax, like cotton, pregnant fuel. But let's talk about voting over the word T-Splosh. The sale of food and food items are specifically applicable to T-Splosh. In the new shop, the legislature is helping the roads and transportation systems in Moche County. To find out more about how you can vote for T-Splosh, see the link above. Voting begins October fifteenth.
And so that's kind of an example of a video we could do. Now, we could, and Shaun, I don't want to overcommit y'all, but we could, you know, we could talk about different projects that would be funded by the T-Splosh. But just wanted to give you that as a conversation starter and get your thoughts on that and any other methods of kind of getting the word out on T-Splosh.
Enjoyed that, I mean, AI generated there. Good job.
Jerry did it. Do y'all generally like that kind of thing? Well, yeah. Just any direction you have for us. It'd be great.
I liked the idea, you know, we just need to make sure we don't cross that parameter of, you know, just educational and not, I think we draw a fine line on that.
It can't advocate. It can just give information.
Yep. But, I mean, people need to be educated on it, and what it's going to be doing, I think it's, you know, watching the, what's going on with the Public Works and even the Water Department with Facebook and everything. I mean, that's a lot of people, you get a lot of thumbs up on what's going on, and that right there would be great to me, would be a great tool.
Jason, are we planning like any kind of work sessions or any kind of public forums?
That was kind of something I wanted to get feedback on too. If you think that would be beneficial, we could certainly schedule something like that.
I think it is. With the school district, I do T-Splosh campaigns like that, and it's the same thing. We can't advocate for it, but we can educate the public on it. And we usually do, you know, fifteen, twenty slide presentation that tells what it's been used for in other counties, what the benefit would be, what it can provide for just educational purposes, and then a question and answer session for people to say, well, what about this or what about that? And you can just say, yes, it can be funded by it or no, it can't.
Would y'all want to try to do maybe, what do you think, two of them in October? Or what do you think in terms of the timing and quantity?
Yeah, I think two. I think two would be sufficient.
I think, and one of the things is, the fair is going to be in town in October, correct? And that's a huge place of gathering that we can get a lot of people at one time if we can have something there to hand out or whatever for there.
The other thing we do need to list is those projects so people know what and why they're voting.
Right.
Roads, obviously.
You might have a screen set up inside that building at the fair that runs your presentation.
Yeah, and then with the short videos, again, that's a great intro on, one could be specifically about the projects. Again, so they know where and why we're at. Encouraging the education.
I think it's a great idea.
All right. But I think that's good. We'll get to work on those things, and if y'all have other ideas as you think on it, just let us know. We'll get that rolling.
I'd like to offer the newspaper if somebody who sends us the project and stuff, we could run an article every week.
Awesome.
Great idea.
Somebody who's listening, who understands the point.
He's shaking his head behind you.
Is that it?
Hmm?
All right, we had a few people come in here late. Is Ms. Denise Carswell here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You weren't here, come forward. We got you on visitor, so I went back to you. I figured, I saw y'all coming in, I guarantee that, just introduce yourself right there. Make sure the light's on.
Okay, well, I am Denise Carswell, and we've come out of concerns for our road on Honeysuckle Drive, and it's part Twigs and part Jones County. And I have a representative from Jones County. I live in Twigs, in the Twigs Park, but Mr. Ricks lives in the Jones Park, so thank y'all for having us come.
Sure.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, our concern about where we live, it's on Candlewood and Honeysuckle and Primrose, and we're concerned to see what we need to do to get on, to get something done to the streets because they're really getting bad, and hasn't been anything done to them in a really long time.
You're lucky the Public Works director's at the back.
That's why I need to talk to them.
Sitting right behind you.
Right behind you.
We talked to them, and they have done diligent work. They have come out there, we've got potholes, gone bad. But what we've got now is just filling in potholes. It's like a popcorn road now. We're knocking down, knocking down, potholes, popcorn. I mean, that's the way it is, and when you come in straight from Highway fifty-seven, there's a big stretch that's probably about four feet across and all the way across the road, and it is just horrible. And then when you get on down the road.
It gets worse.
Right, it gets smooth, and then it gets worse. I've actually had a car to tear up a couple of years ago. It was a big mound in the road, and it hit under the car. They came out and fixed it, but there was something underneath that, it kept growing it. But it gets to the point, we've been there thirty years, he's been there, what, about thirty-five?
Twenty-seven. No, no. Yeah, boy, thirty-seven. I'm sorry. I get it wrong. That's what age do for you.
And it not even, paid over. It's just been a fix, fix, fix. I tell you, it is totally, I mean, it's just bumping, bumping. It's like a gravel trail.
Well, you got the man right behind you that, okay, not the one in the middle.
Raise your hand.
Raise your hand.
We talked to someone yesterday, and they said, only thing they can do, Ms. Brenda, she was really sweet.
Miranda?
Yes. She said that they can only do potholes. We're asking for some type of paving, even if it's for a section of the road. They said they couldn't do that, that they were limited to just, to just potholes, fixing the potholes. But we're asking if we, I know you have other roads, but if we can get on a list or something to have that road resurfaced, because potholes is not going to fix the problem that we have.
If you can't do the whole road, do as much as you can.
Sure.
It would be greatly appreciated, because we really got some nice be here, because I was there, and some nice homes. And it, it's just not, it doesn't look good when you come in there like that, and you got to be bouncing and bumping and.
I live on a dirt road.
Was this one of the ones that was on our grading?
I think it's one of them that needs repair, and that's one of the things, just like what we were just talking about with the T-Splosh, that's important for you to help educate your neighbors about, for us to be able to, because that T-Splosh is going to bring in extra funds for us to be able to maintain some roads. Like just for example, we've got a dirt road that is being paved, and it's two million five, no, two, yeah, two million five hundred and seventy-seven thousand and five hundred, okay, so that, and it's maybe three miles long. Okay, so that's the prices we're looking at when we talk about paving roads. It's not cheap anymore, so, but do, help us educate. Help us educate the public about why we need these extra funds, because the state is bringing less and less money to us for paving.
And everybody that shops in the town will actually, you know, pay a part of this. It's just not on.
It's not a rooftop tax.
Okay.
So what is your name?
Al Ricks.
Thanks.
R-I-C-K-S.
Thanks.
If you get that gentleman back there, I think, see what he did for. Hey, thank y'all for coming. Come back now, you don't have to.
Oh, we will.
Come back, yeah, absolutely. We love to see this room.
We'll follow up.
Okay, thank you. All right, we can move on back to new business transit resolution. Mr. Ritter, your FY twenty-six?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this is just a resolution that would authorize us to apply for FY twenty-six Transit Funding, the fifty-three eleven transit service that we have. This is just something we have to do every year as part of that funding process.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second. Any discussion? On favor, I.
Aye.
As have it. EV charging station grant.
So if you flip over to the, to the last page in your packet there, the Middle Georgia Regional Commission reached out to us, and they've been awarded some money for EV charging stations. There are four areas that they've identified there at the bottom, and there are two ways that, if you're interested in pursuing this, there are two ways that they can structure it. One is that we pay a twenty percent match that may top out around ten thousand dollars, they say, and then we own the site and we charge users. If we don't want to pay anything upfront, they can still install the charging station. Someone else would be charged with owning it and operating it and collecting those fees. So just wanted to see if you were interested, one, and two, which of those approaches you like, if you are interested.
We got two, we got two electric car guys in here right now.
All right, I'm going to say, I'd like us to host, and I'd like to add one at the sheriff's station, so you can stop saying that we don't have infrastructure for them. You know, Middle Georgia Regional Commission, the Clean Air Coalition does an excellent job of identifying spaces and places for people to, to charge. It's been long overdue, and I think that, you know, in the county, we definitely should host some sites, so, my two cents.
I would agree on hosting them. I don't know if we want to own and operate them, because I don't think we're going to have the volume, because those, all four of them would have to have a service plan for them to be able to have, and you get on the infrastructure where you got to have a card swipe for the, the people that have the apps on their phone that charges their cars. They're going to have an account set up on their, on their app, so when they pull up and start charging, it charges you two dollars an hour, or two dollars per charge. If we don't have the volume of cars coming through and we're paying thirty-five dollars a month, and we're making twenty-two dollars a month off the charge, it doesn't do it. But these third-party companies will have them in all eleven counties around us, and they will have the volume to pay their licensing fees to make it worthwhile. But I think having the opportunity, I mean, we see the ones at Ranchers and the ones downtown, they're, I mean, they're not packed full, because Tesla's known for putting, you know, way more charges than they need, but they want to be able to provide it for their customers. So I think, I think that we need the opportunity to charge, but if people are going to have the electric vehicles, but I would say there's no cost to us for a third party to do it.
Right.
And, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, we got ten at Ranchers, we got four at Waffle House, and we got four at Pickle Barrel. I think downtown's pretty wrapped up.
And the courthouse is out on the street. The courthouse has charges also.
That's right, Ben Axel there.
Those are all Tesla.
Huh?
Tri-County?
Yep, Tri-County too. So I think we got this side of the town.
I know all the ones at Ranchers are Teslas. What are the ones in, are they level twos or are they Teslas?
I know Sherry put in the ones at the Waffle House and Pickle Barrel and Ben Axel, and then the Tri-County put the one in there at Tri-County.
So do we need to go outside of the city, like, make it haddock, south?
Definitely want some forty-nine.
Mm-hmm. Because I'm aware, it looks like we got a gracious plenty downtown, but we need to.
I would think the two recreation complexes would be good locations, you know, quantity of people there at one time.
And again, the sheriff's office.
Yeah, I do, maybe the sheriff's office.
Kicking and screaming.
You need a motion to, go for this to grant, I believe.
Yep.
We have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any more discussion? On favor, I.
Aye.
There's more discussion.
One question for clarification. So we just want to, we want to host them and have a third party operate them?
That's what they want to do.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Yeah, from what I remember at the regional commission, we didn't have to decide now. It was if you would host the sites.
Okay.
So I think, I think yes is the answer, and then if we're awarded the sites, because it's going to depend on how many other people get them and all that, so over, over flooding the area, so if we're going to go with two sites and we get approved, then we can decide whether we want to put the money up front or a third party run it.
All right. Clear? Good. All right, we'll move on. Beer and wine license, Crystal, you here tonight?
Yes.
Sorry for the, for the confusion on the date.
Yes, sir. Because on the paper, you told me to be here on the field.
Yep, that was on a board of assessors meeting. I remember when you come in, I was like.
I remember you coming in, and it was like, I don't think she, I think, and then we found out that you were supposed to be at the other day.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, the charges that's on that paper is untrue. It was no selling, selling to a minor. That's not a charge that they gave me at all. It was violating chapter six. You got the paper?
I do.
It was violating chapter six and what else?
That was it. Chapter six, illegal sales of alcohol and violation of the county ordinance, chapter six.
That's, that's the charges that they gave me.
So wouldn't sales to a minor fall under chapter six, illegal sales?
Well, and they can charge the owner of the establishment or the bartender with sales to a minor. Somebody absolutely was charged.
Nobody was charged.
Well, investigator Nelson said that they were, so.
So on the warrant that they came in with on August the twelfth, it only says, this is now to search premises for records of transactions, financial records pertaining to illegal sales of alcohol and violation of county ordinance six. That's all it says. And the citations that she was given, it says defendant sold liquor at the establishment of We Got You, which is located at twenty-four forty Sherlin Drive, Suite one or two, Jones County, is a dry county where liquor cannot be poured on premises. That's the citation that was issued when it came for the search warrant, as well as another citation for said defendant did sell liquor or is responsible for alcohol being sold on premises of the establishment of We Got You. Liquor was being sold and poured on premises. It says nothing about minors, and these are the two citations she received that day. However, we do not believe that any ordinance was violated because chapter six, article one, six point three, under open containers, section four E, states, this section shall not apply to facilities or events sanctioned or approved by the Board of Commissioners as facilities or events where alcohol may be served. We were approved to serve alcohol originally when we came and applied, or she was approved.
Beer and wine. You were not approved to sell liquor, and this board's heard from the sheriff's department that they absolutely did a sting, and there was not only liquor sold, but there was liquor sold to a minor. And we've heard from several people at the sheriff's department that were involved in that. But the board, since the wrong date was given, needs to make a motion to rescind the previous vote to suspend, and then you can motion, if you want, to re-suspend based upon what you all have heard by the sheriff's department, and.
But wouldn't I got a citation for serving to a minor? Because I don't have that citation. They didn't give me that.
But you were serving liquor in a dry county.
Hi, hold on, because it says, again, under open containers, it states what open containers is. It says to steal liquor. It states that.
No.
I mean, I have, do you have the ordinance pulled up? Because I have it right here.
I can't give you legal advice, because I represent the county, so I would.
You know, I'm not asking for legal advice.
So what I'm telling you is that doesn't apply to a totally separate code section. So the issue before the board is you all first need to motion to rescind, because they did get an improper notice previously with the wrong date, and then you all can decide what you want to do with beer and wine license, if you want to suspend it or reinstate it.
Is it someone that can pull this ordinance up so they can see what I am seeing?
I know exactly what you're talking about. It doesn't apply to this situation, but again, I can't give you legal advice.
It says to steal liquor in here.
That you cannot sell liquor. That does not give you authority to sell liquor in Jones County. You had authority for beer and wine only, and absolutely liquor was being sold, so.
It did get sold. However, it, it says it right here in the ordinance.
No, ma'am, that ordinance does not give you authority to sell liquor.
But your license says beer and wine.
Correct.
Okay.
This section, it.
Your license says beer and wine.
If you're at a wedding and they, you know, a caterer comes in, or the bride and groom has liquor, they're not selling liquor.
I understand.
What you are referencing has nothing to do with your beer and wine license and giving you authority to sell liquor in the county.
I get what you're saying, but that's not how this reads. And another belief we had, since it's okay for other establishments in a dry Jones County to sell alcohol, which they do, because I have my receipt, there is three other establishments that sell to steal liquor in Jones County. I have a picture of them, and you.
You can certainly make a complaint, but we're dealing with your beer and wine license and the violations.
So which one did I violate, exactly?
Well, you just admitted that you were selling liquor on a beer and wine license.
Yeah, can you give me the section, please?
Whatever you were cited with. I don't have that in front of me.
It just says section six.
Okay.
But in that same section, it says, this can be.
Can I get a motion to rescind our previous?
A motion to rescind.
Second.
Second, on favor.
Now, whatever you want to motion now.
So, again, it's a beer and wine license. We do not serve alcohol or allow the serving of alcohol on a beer and wine license. Y'all understand that.
Correct.
All right.
But if you could pull up section six point three. Listen, it's under, it's here. It says the steel spirit.
Perhaps on your citation.
It says it right here, the steel spirit.
That's not, that's the, that's, you need to go before a judge on that one.
Yes.
This board's making, we just rescinded it now.
Making a decision on the license.
Okay.
All right. What's the board want to do?
All right. So because you admitted selling of alcohol, we have to motion to suspend your license. You understand that?
Correct.
All right.
But it's just at the We Got You, not her other.
That's my, I heard.
Or was it for Olive?
That's motion to rescind.
We already did the motion to rescind.
Okay, now this is a motion.
This is a motion to suspend the license at that location.
At that location?
At that location.
Previously, you all had suspended all.
Right. So my question again.
But my stores are in compliance.
The other location.
Right. And, and so for me, I would like clarity sheriff-wise on any other infraction at another location.
We don't have any, we don't have any, we ain't compliant at the stores.
I think what Commissioner Martin is saying is we need clarity from the sheriff.
Right, because the minor is a thing. Like, I want to know, like, I need to see that citation, and they brought that up, you know, I don't know if that's a separate citation.
No, because this was on the paper for me to come.
Right, and, and so that makes me curious to ask. If you did sell to a minor, I want to suspend it for the other two locations.
Okay, that's not true.
Okay, I'm just letting you know. I want that.
But that will be determined when they go to court on the citations, right?
I don't, I don't know about that.
Do you want to get Nelson on the phone?
Yeah, we can, for clarity, yes.
Forty-niners is attached.
It, forty-niner mark connected to the We Got You?
It's not connected, it's a separate suite.
Where the subway was?
Yeah, that's where We Got You, forty-niner is the H for me, so.
Yeah.
Ma'am.
What is your name?
Kamisha. K-A-M-I-E-S-H-A. Hancock. H-A-N-C-O-C-K.
Thank you.
Do you know what the fair dates are?
Eight, I think. It's the first day.
Eighth through the trail.
I think so, because I, I can't cook that first night. We gotta meet.
We got bad, so the light can't, I don't know.
It's, uh, no, it's, wait a minute. It's the eighth. I think it's the eighth. Wait a minute.
What are you looking at? Fair date?
No, I'm trying to get.
Um, he is walking outside away from a grandchild yelling in the background. He's gonna call right back. And he says there was a charge. They would be the ones to answer that.
He might be having the same luck I did.
Can't get away from.
Trying to get away from grandkids. And they run out in the, in the area, grab, uh, you on the phone. Yeah, that's why I left the house.
Table for just a second and start with the department head?
Yeah, we can, if we, if you don't mind, we'll, we'll table this till we hear from the, the sheriff.
We'll call you back up in just a minute.
We'll call you back up once we get answer. Sean, I understand Jerry's gonna do, uh, public work tonight, department head?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Jerry, you gonna, you gonna, you gonna give a report for us tonight?
Okay.
Mr. Reddick?
Chairman, I was gonna report on two quick things. One, the, the, uh, performance review, review of the tax assessor's office will take place the week of October 15th. All of y'all will be getting a phone call from someone with Georgia Department of Revenue to set up an interview. That's, um, a, a part of this process is they'll contact each one of you directly to, to set up those interviews. And so, um, if you'll kind of block out that week of October 15th, then, uh, they'll get with you on the exact date and time. Uh, just wanted to let you know that you'll be getting a call about that. You have an email on the desk about the DOAA process, the, the ratio study. Um, there are some costs potentially associated with the second level. Oh, go ahead, Tim.
You said October, what was October 15th?
That week is the, um, performance review of the assessor's office.
Not, not the ratio appeal?
Correct.
That's the on first.
On the first, that's correct. Um, and then on the, for the, for the, uh, sales ratio study, which is through Department, Department of Audits and Accounts, there are some costs potentially associated with the second level of appeal there. And that's what that, the email on, on the table concerns. It could be approximately five to $6,000 is what Mr. George has indicated there. I will certainly talk with, with the Board of Education and, and see if they would be open to, to splitting that cost if we even get to that point. I think, um, you know, I, I think if, if we get good results in that initial step, then you don't have to go to this, the second stage, so.
That was gonna be my question. Is it both or would you want and then the second one?
Right. I, I think there's no cost associated with the, with the initial one, so.
What date is the appeal?
The, the sales ratio appeal is October 1st.
October 1st.
Where is that? What time is that, Jason?
It'll be here. It's at 10:00 AM.
Thank you.
And that's here.
And I'm working. It, it is at the government center. I'm working on the exact location. Uh, grand jury is scheduled to meet in this room that day. And so, uh, may have to do it in a different room, but, uh, or maybe able to move them to a different room. So working, working out the logistics on that. But, but yes, somewhere here at the government center.
Any other questions on that? Y'all wanna move to citizen's comments while we're waiting on, any citizen tonight wanna come forward, citizen comment?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few words, Mr. Allen.
Introduce yourself and your address for the.
Jimmy Crutchfield, 2273 Monticello Highway around Oak, Georgia. Uh, first thing I wanna say, I appreciate you letting me come forward and speak. I want you to know that the citizens of Jones County, the majority behind y'all on this tax board thing, I don't know what you're gonna have to do, but I know some action's gonna have to be taken. We know that the, the, the ratio, we, I think around 31%, we need to be 36 to 40, preferably 38% is where you wanna be in order to get the, the tax from the utilities, which you paid a full amount. And I know y'all aware that we have lost in the last three years close two point something million dollars because the utilities didn't pay their full amount of tax. And that was because of the ratio. It's got to be fixed. And I don't know, I do know one thing. The tax assessors determine this, the board and the chief appraisal. Now, I don't know what's going on. And I don't know what y'all gonna have to do, but I do know this. In Bib County, 2004 to 2006, I do not remember the exact date, they had the same problem. What did they do? They dismissed the board, got a new board, a new chief appraisal, and fixed the problem. Took them three years to fix the problem. But they got it fixed. You do know if you don't get it fixed in three years after you appeal, do you know what that's gonna cost the county? Five percent per parcel. Everybody that owns a piece of property in this county is gonna pay five percent to the state coming out of the county. It's got to be fixed. And we need to get it fixed right now. We need to get a fair tax. And I think the only way y'all gonna be able to do it, I don't think you can hire enough people to go look at everybody's property. It's gonna have to be a reeval. It's gotta be a, a outside vendor come in, and you're gonna have to look at everybody's property. And that's the way you're gonna have to fix it. And it's gonna take three years to do it. Is that it? Time up?
Thank you, sir.
I could've talked a while long.
Thank you, sir. All right, um, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone.
We'll go back to citizen's comments.
Hold on one second. So Chief Deputy Hunt freezes on the phone. You there?
Yes, sir.
Um, do you mind letting the board know, again, because it's been a couple weeks, the details regarding, um, the beer and wine license issue that was suspended?
Yeah, sure. We, uh, reacted to some complaints that we had that were both either, uh, they were advertising, uh, drinks on sale at the, uh, We Got You restaurant down there or catering service. And they sold, um, uh, distilled spirits, uh, and, uh, I know at least two occasions. And then on a, on a separate occasion that we, um, uh, sent an underage, uh, person in there. And they actually, uh, was able to purchase a, uh, a, uh, an alcoholic beverage there, uh, at the same place.
Did they receive citations for each one of those instances?
They, they were.
All right. On the one with the minor, would it be specific to state the minor?
No, it would not.
So she's produced two citations. We don't know what they're for? Are they generic citations?
Can you hear?
No, they, I just, just, yeah, just barely, yes. But, uh, there was an underage, she, there, there was a charge brought on the underage sale of alcohol.
Okay. And, and the reason why we ask is because the citations, I think, appear to be generic. Um, would, would one be specific enough to identify sales to a minor?
Now, that, the, the one sale to mine was probably a state warning. That's probably gone to the DA's office.
So, we don't.
That should go to the DA's office, actually.
Thank you.
Sorry?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. I appreciate your, your time.
No problem. Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay.
Anything you wanna add? Okay. Motion to suspend at all locations.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor, I?
Aye.
All right, back to citizen comments. Any, anybody else wanna come up for citizen comment? Oh, you doing the department head's way up here?
No.
Well, it's that time of year again. Station eight has our open house and barbecue.
And you're cooking?
Yep. So that'll be this Friday. Well, the barbecue's Saturday, but we're gonna cook Friday.
What are the times?
Eleven to three.
Thank you.
And where's Station Eight?
On Gray Highway.
Just for the viewers.
Yeah.
We appreciate everything y'all do. All the volunteers, everything. I mean, we can't thank y'all enough.
Right across from Sand Creek, big sign out there says we'll be here Saturday.
This Saturday from 11 to 3.
Yeah, sure enough.
Can I come by?
$10 plate.
Donation's accepted.
And it's going to a good cause.
Yep, barbecue chips, barbecue stew, coleslaw. So I can wash it down with you.
Do you have anything non-pork?
Yeah.
I usually have a chicken.
Coleslaw.
And potato chips. And potato chips and a drink and a piece of pound cake.
All right, so I can come by on Friday, because I have a funeral on Saturday to go to if I need to. What time you cooking on Friday?
Uh, we're probably gonna put it on about nine, 11 o'clock.
At night?
Maybe in the morning.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Well, I say nine. Probably by 11 o'clock we'll be cooking.
Okay.
They'll, they'll give you a sandwich that identifies as beef, how's that?
Well, then we'll be ready Friday, so.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, wait a minute. Don't go anywhere.
What?
I wanna shout out.
Shout out.
On 9/11, when the fire department, the fire departments around the state of Georgia, taking a, taking oath to walk to the, march to the top of Stone Mountain.
I don't know about march.
Well, you climbed, crawled, begged for oxygen, all of those things on the way up to the top. But Jerry actually completed and went all the way to the top of Stone Mountain.
I went by myself. There was about four more others that went and three from the city.
He just got a photo op on the top.
Yeah.
Also made Channel 2 news in Atlanta. From behind.
A great job. Proud of you.
Proud of you.
I'm proud of me, too.
I know you were.
That's why he's walking so slow.
That's, that's a fast gear for him now. Any, any other citizen tonight wanna come forward? Sure. Just introduce yourself and your.
Good evening. My name is Ernest Skelton. I live at 355 Hunter's Circle Drive. Uh, matter of fact, the same street that Ms. Carswell is, uh, has already brought forth. Uh, my concern is, um, as you're coming, coming off Highway 57 into, off of, into Callanwood Drive, there's Old Garden Road and, and, uh, 57 parallel to each other. There's two stop signs and a yield sign. The stop sign is on Old 57 West and on Callanwood, uh, uh, South. But there's a yield sign on, uh, Old 57 East. Both of those, Old 57 have dead ends. So my concern is why there's a yield sign on 57 and a stop sign on 57 and a stop sign on, uh, Callanwood Drive, it should be, to me, it should be, uh, two-way stop or four-way stop. Because Callanwood Drive, it's the main road running off Highway 57 into Hunter's Drive. But Old Garden Road is dead end on each, each side.
And it's got like two houses on each end of it, doesn't it?
Correct.
Yeah.
And so, uh, the, the main flow of traffic is from, uh, coming off Highway 57, going into the neighborhood, uh, Callanwood Drive. But on, on Highway 57, you have a yield sign. So it's just my concern, because I almost got hit coming out of there one day and from the yield sign off of Old Highway 57. So we'd just like for you guys to look at it.
Gentleman right back there. Anyone else on, on, uh?
I just wanna respond to that, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Oh, the, the manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices requires a stop sign if you're making a left turn. The yield sign is on the side of Old 57 that you make a right turn.
Okay.
Uh, but we will, we will check that intersection for compliance.
So to be clear, you, you can't put a yield sign where the, the, uh, Uniform Traffic, uh, says it needs to be a stop sign. But you can put a stop sign where it says it could be a yield sign, right? You can go stronger.
Correct. You can go stronger. Yeah.
And that may be the answer to a full way.
Yeah, we'll reevaluate the intersection if, if it's so needed, we'll.
And I'll tell you, like, on the bus, because I've driven it so many times down through there, you know, you come off of 57 and there's the old Highway 57 there. But coming back out, you stop on the other side of the old Highway 57. And then you come down here and you stop again. So it would kind of make sense to me if both of these side roads had the stop sign.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Yeah, we will, we will evaluate the intersection and make changes as needed.
Thank you. Anyone else want to say some comments tonight? Commissioner Wood, you wanna start us off on, on, uh, commissioner comment?
Just have several events going on in, over the weekend. Just wanna make sure the community supports them between the touch of truck and barbecue at Station Eight.
Mm-hmm. Got something else going. Was there a fall festival this weekend, too?
Fall festival downtown.
Busy weekend.
Right, busy weekend.
Forgot about the downtown one.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Kish.
Dogs had an ugly win. Falcons had an awesome win. But they were both wins. They were both wins. And it's a great day. That's all I got, chairman.
Hey, but wait a minute. Sometimes you cheer for that orange team.
I don't wanna hear that. Don't turn your microphones off.
Commissioner Bone, you wanna?
Um, this past week, we laid to rest somebody that was near and dear to a lot of people's heart in Jones County. And, um, at the graveside service, a little history was given that was, meant a lot to me because I actually started in Jones County Rescue in 1986. And her number was 102, and it was Ms. Joyce Colter. For those that don't know, years ago, Jones County was completely ran by volunteers for rescue and fire. Got some founding members right back there, sitting in chairs, too. Um, when Alan Green used to have his EMA office above what's the city of Gray, little two-room office with a bathroom up there. I never went up there but once because it was so crowded in there. I was like, I cannot do this. So, um, but Ms. Joyce and Bobby Colter started the EMS side of it to give back to.
So, um, but Miss Joyce and Bobby Coulter started the EMS side of it to give back to Jones County after their son was diagnosed and ended up passing away with, um, leukemia? I think it was leukemia, wasn't it? A form of cancer. He was, um, three years old. And in order to feel like what they needed to do for this county and all that they had did for them was to give back. And they gave back in a huge way, a way that I wish today that we had more young people like me. I was fifteen years old when I joined Jones County Rescue. And I ran it until I was twenty-seven. And we don't have that kind of volunteer anymore. We don't have that pride in our community. We was known as the best in the nation for volunteers. Oh, because we ran our whole county off of volunteers. We were some of the first to ever have AEDs when even the Bibb County Fire Department didn't have AEDs on their fire trucks. We had them in Jones County. So, it was a great history lesson, it was a great time to see many people I haven't seen in a while, but she is very much going to be missed but remembered throughout Jones County. So, the memory of Miss Joyce Coulter lives on. Sorry, Daylon, I should, I should have went last.
Not at all, not at all. Um, I, I'm just going to say this. We have T-Splas and we have, um, alcohol being, um, items on the ballot. And they're on the ballot for specific reasons for roads, um, and projects that are essential to transportation. We had a study that was done, there's a lot of roads on the list, and for those that may not know, um, it went through every line item, uh, I mean, each road, and there's line items that are attached to the roads. And the way to get those roads done is the T-Splas and potentially, um, voting for alcohol, whether you drink it or not, it's the tax. What's that?
Five million.
Five million. And not to make light of what happened tonight, but alcohol sales, um, are so important because they drive, um, a lot of other things that your county could do. And unfortunately, our county doesn't have it. But we have liquor stores at the edges of our counties, so if you need some, you can get it on the way in. But we need to tax it. Um, and, and all I'm saying is this, I cannot, for the T-Splas, advocate, I'm just telling you to educate your, um, your fellow citizens, that those two things are out there, um, and if it's a gut check, um, that's fine, but I think we have to do it for the right reason, to get the tax off the house. Because there's no way we can pay these roads. They're, they're six hundred plus roads, I can't remember, um, that'll be around when my children die. Okay, just for perspective. So, advocate, advocate, advocate. Thank you.
And I think it's the consensus of the board to use both the alcohol and the T-Splas for roads.
Absolutely.
So that we're earmarking, if we get package sales voted in, that's going to be earmarked for, for transportation.
Yep.
And, uh, to, uh, also, if the T-Splas goes through, also enhance it, because, uh, the price of doing business these days? Ridiculous. And just go to the grocery store, we're having the same, we're having the same problem with this county keeping up with the, the ride. Judge, I see you right there. You were hiding.
Just came by to say hello.
Just, well, you, department head.
Well, nothing to report, they said, I want to say thank you for your work behind the scenes, um, on contingent, to make sure that you look at the need that we have at Jones County Courthouse expansion. I know Jason Kidd doesn't, not my voice going on behind the scenes, sir, just want to say thank you for that.
All right.
Appreciate you.
All right. Yeah, you, you were hiding, and I finally saw you.
I was.
I could see you sliding out, he don't want me to call.
It's too big, right?
He did, he does not want me to see him. You just happened to poke your head around, look at here. All right, is there anything else? Executive session, litigation.
I'm making a motion to go into executive session for legal.
Second?
For legal, yeah.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you everybody for coming.
Do we need to order pizza? Okay, I'm just checking.